We're going to go ahead and start this meeting and for some reason you do not hear me, please let me know. We're just getting ready to begin the open meetings, but I guess we're going to open this meeting. It's ten o'clock, twenty-second day of June, 2020. We're going to call this meeting to order. Item one point two is road call. We're all here except Ms. Valery, Commissioner precinct four five seven. Item, so we have a forum, so we're going to move on to the pledge of allegiance and the salute to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the states of America. And to the beloved and privileged citizens, one nation under the individual or liberty intended. We salute the Texas flag. Our Texas flag is the representative of Texas. Item one point four is testimonial of both presenters. Everybody needs to know that anybody that makes any statement to this flag, you know, they also are under penalty of perjury, that is, you submit to the house of perjury. Before we begin, I don't know, we should do this again. Because the little masks that we have to wear now, I'm going to ask that if anybody comes to the podium, they speak directly into the mic so that we can hear you. Commissioners, motions, seconds, comments, speak into the mic, okay? Otherwise, we're not going to be able to hear anybody. Mario Caballos, do not leave my meeting under any circumstances, please, okay? You. We need to be more vigilant now. Unofficially, we went from zero to four cases of COVID in Dimi County. And a lot of us thought that, or want to think that it's because we're lucky, we didn't have any virus as well. Unfortunately, that's not why we didn't have any viruses. The reason why we weren't having any viruses is because generally, for the most part, most of our constituency was doing what needed to be done. Our governor and our president have seen fit that we're ready to go and move forward. It's fine and dandy, but as you can see, everything is on the virus, it's all, everything's going up. This community was doing what they were supposed to be doing. Now I watch the streets and it looks like everybody thinks it's over with. It's not over with. We need to be careful. I don't see why wearing this thing is so much inconvenience for people. It's been shown historically, since nineteen seventeen, that the only way you're going to stop the virus is by taking precautions, that is, wash your hands, use your face masks when you're talking to people. Scientifically, they've already found out that when you wear your mask, the chances of you're getting the virus are pretty high. So why do not one of our masks? Are behind the, we have, we have seen that when one person's contacts contracts the virus, it's very easy to spread. In a, just in a day, how many people do we come into contact with? And then how many, once you pass that virus, how many people that acquired the virus have that same contact with other people? So it grows exponentially once the virus starts spreading. The governor has seen fit to limit our authority to regulate our community. And that is our fault because people do not participate in the voting process. And because we do not participate in the voting process, the governor, the government, and I hate to say it, some of the Republicans, Northmen, they want to take away the power of the local government from the local government. That is our fault because we do not take our citizenship seriously. Going up to go, seems like it's a big burden. We're going to ask everybody that comes into this courthouse to wear masks, whether they take it or not. If they don't want to do their business in the courthouse, that's up to them. When any of us comes into this courthouse, the other courthouse, their temperature is going to be checked. We're going to have to give that instruction to our, our, our security guards, our officers here, our first point of contact. Right now, we're trying to figure out why you go to Pierceville, you get your results tomorrow. You come to Dimi County elsewhere, you get your results seven days after. I don't know, I'm trying to figure all that stuff out, but. Commissioners, I infer you all to think if we pass a no face mask in Dimi County, nobody outside of our face mask in Dimi County, and we attach a penalty, we probably violated the governor's rule. If they find, they want to come after me, come after us, I lose my job, okay? You guys pay a thousand dollar fine. Maybe go to jail for six months. I don't know, you all are going to take their place lying, I don't care if I lose my job. So I want you to think about it. Get another people going to complain because there's people that don't want to hear that, that's okay. But I'm contemplating passing another executive order that prohibits anybody in the public network environment and attach to it a one thousand dollar fine. You know, the virus was eighty miles away, forty-three miles away, eleven miles away, now it's across the street. So take it after what it's worth. I was contemplating opening, I asked all the electric officials to be here, we are excused for your reports. Anybody that needs to give a report, they don't have to be here, there's substantial reports in time. And commissioners, if you have a question to run your report, you're going to get, we get the agenda, we get the information two, three days before. You have any questions, we put them down in writing and then we'll communicate. My office will communicate directly with the electric officials to get their input, get whatever questions you need to be asked. For the most part, the reports are straightforward. The only thing that we ask after the reports is, do you have any concerns, anything that we need to be aware of, anything you need for the county to do for you so that you can do your job? And those persons that present their reports, just present a little statement, and you have a question, you have a comment, or if you want something for the officials to answer for you, write it down and we'll get an answer for you from the court and send it back to you. I know that, you know, at this point, the virus takes the weak, the feeble, the elderly, those persons that have medical problems. And statistically, that's like, that's, I don't know how many people this, I'm just guessing here, but always from what I've been hearing, pieces and things is, it's a high, high ratio of people that have some sort of medical problem that can, that can have devastating effects by the, by the virus. I don't want to lie, I don't want to be President Trump and give you some information or wrong, just saying, there's a high number of people that have problems that will, that they contract the virus, it will be fatal to them. So having said that, I'm going to excuse the electric officials that are here to give your report. Make sure you are safe, wear your masks, wash your hands. Don't kiss anybody unless it's your friendly neighbor who will come and judge. To that, you have to be careful, okay? Commissioner, do you have something on the agenda or something you wish to address the forum?
We have the city into local agreement.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and ask you all then.
Uh, Judge.
Yes, sir.
Okay, in our office?
What, that?
Yes, in our office, we do need shields to be installed, the plastic. I know they have it, we made last week, but you know, it wasn't.
We're, we're going to see if we can get something better. Our problem is we all have the computers and things that are stored on the, on the desks. So the only thing I can think of is to have something in the door where people can just come into the door and not come into your office. The other thing that we were thinking about is putting the, those, those glasses on a frame. But then the secretary say they don't want it too high, they don't want it too low. I said, okay, I'm not going to do it. We're going to have protests, I'm not going to do it. The other thing that we had a problem with, if we put them on stand, somebody's going to trip, somebody's going to fall because they had to do, legs have to be pretty. The only thing that we could think of is attaching them to the desks, but I think to screw stuff onto the desks. So we'll try to figure out.
Thank you.
Do you have any suggestions of how you think we can do it? Okay, I need it to come from the electric official, not from?
I, I was thinking maybe something portable or real that lives inside the office, you know? That way, they just get down at the door, outside, you know, at the door and just, but that's something I was thinking of.
Okay, that, that, that'll work, I mean, we just have to make the stills bigger and put a little, something where that you can handle back to.
I'd like to comment, make sure we measure our commission first, then we can go from there. Thank you, oh, appreciate it.
Judge, could I make a comment, please?
Yes, sir.
There's, there's been questions with the recent activity concerning the testing, people that want to get tested because they've been in contact with somebody or whatever. And I don't know what, I know the hospital is testing, Luella know, Dr. Luella's office, and South Texas will help. But I don't know what the conditions are, do you have to have symptoms or what?
Well, you have to go to the same, same questionnaire that, that everybody is going through, and the reason is because we don't have enough test kits. So if we test everybody that walks into the door, then those persons that walk into the door might or might not need to be tested.
The people that are concerned are those that have been in contact with somebody that was positive.
Those persons meet the criteria more than likely, so, but that's how we got.
What do you think about maybe a meeting between the hospital and city council and just kind of go over things?
I don't, I don't have a problem with it, I just had, I just talked to Christina, Christina's supposed to get a hold of the hospitals, and we have four or five questions that we need to answer, which is, why does Pierceville have a testing center that they test and tomorrow they get the results? Why can't we have that? The other question is, why does, why do other counties have testing kits? And what can't we get, what's the problem that we can't get? Why is the hospital in the valley doing testing, why can't we do it? So all those questions, I want to find out because if there's something that we need to do, I want to get it done, okay? So because if it's a matter of money, it should not be a matter of money. But if it is, well, there's things we can do for the, what I'm hearing from Christina is if you have insurance, a doctor will test you or order you to be tested. But if you don't, they want to send you somewhere else, why is that happening, okay? So why, if we have to create a call center, we have the means to create a call center. So we're trying to mimic what Eagle Pass is doing because Eagle Pass has a, a call center, but I don't understand why we need to do that. Why, why can't a person from Dimi County that has what the problem you're talking about, that they're already in contact with somebody's test positive, why can't they come in to a doctor's facility, the hospital, the clinic and get tested just because they're already in contact with somebody?
We just need to get that clarified through the.
We were working on it this morning, but we need here, so we'll see what we can do to get all those.
I've got a comment. One of the things that about those people, uh, in the same situation that we're dealing with. I have a meeting with Christina and also the, we're not the first responders, seeing what situation they're in. It's kind of a, a, a waiting, but to find out who needs what or who's going, uh, the, how the preventative measures are going. We're doing everything we can to keep, um, isolate for, complete, complete, uh, how do you say that?
So what is it that you want to?
What I want to do is we can have a meeting with her and she gives us an update on who needs what and, because we're getting packs from her, from her and, and the question is, but we also need information of our view as elected officials are going to get the information from her to the public. You know what I'm saying?
I don't, I don't know why the public needs to know how we give.
Well, I, I got several calls, and they were telling me that there was these things going on and I thought, uh, I, I guess the emergency coordinator, I didn't respond yet, so I was unaware of what was going on.
What things were they talking?
About all these people that had that, that COVID.
We don't, we cannot, we, okay, let me, before you go. We will let the public know what we can tell them, when we can tell them. Because the rumor gets to your ears before the authority from CDC. And we cannot, that's why we put on the, if they really want to know, they need to look at, at the, we, we put, every day we put out. Do you put a copy of that letterhead, that, the little document that tells us how many people are infected and all that stuff?
No, sir, by the DHS, I'm not allowed to post that on social media. That's why I just break down the numbers and post it on social media.
Okay, see, we, we got rules and regulations that we got to follow, and the other day, we, we had two people, we had a call from a doctor saying, I received two tests, two positive tests, results. I cannot put that on social media because I don't, first, I don't know if it's, it's true, I don't know why they would lie, but I don't know if it's true. Second, I don't know if the result is accurate, I don't know if CDC has already investigated, I don't know. So we have to wait until CDC says, CDC tells us, okay, we have two positive tested in Dimi County, and then we put, we, we put it, we post.
I understand the procedure, but trying to explain to them is more difficult because they're like, no, you all the selected officials are hiding stuff from us. So I refer them over to Mr. Stein, and I don't know if they call it or not, but.
Yeah, we get a lot of calls.
But they're like, y'all are hiding something, y'all are not transparent, y'all are not doing good. And I tell them also for the different violations and all that, and they seem to.
That's, that's all you have to tell them, and after that, if they don't want to, they don't want to understand, don't worry about it, that's all I can tell. Okay, anybody over the phone?
Just for your information, one of my employees' relatives was sick, so we went to get tested and both of us came negative. On, on the other subject, what they were telling me the other day was that as soon as you know that they're sick, doesn't necessarily qualify you for testing. It has to be three days after, three or four days, that's why they call it the, where you, where you need to be at home for ten days or fourteen days.
One day.
Yeah, and, and that's what they said, that's what they were explaining to me, that it's going to be three or four days after the contact before you could go and get tested. Because if you go right away, of course, you're not going to test negative because nothing, you know, you haven't contracted the disease yet. But that's what they told me, next time to wait three or four days and then go, I told them that'd be fine. Another thing is, Judge, when you said that you're willing to risk, I am, and I think that, I don't know if you heard the news, but in San Antonio, they want to loop home to where they could bypass, find people who do not follow the rules. So maybe we can get with somebody from San Antonio and see what, what all they get. That's what, that's what was on the news, but now they're trying to find people who are not following the procedure. At this, at this, that's the way I thought about it, I, I am to do it, so I might be wrong, but that's what they were saying in the news.
Well, what, what govern, what County Judge Fox said was that his entourage of lawyers believe that if the governor came after the county judge, that they thought that they could win the case, right, that the governor would get him what. But in the meantime, you know, those pushings takes, takes a long time, I, I. I'm sixty-five years old, so I really don't care if I lose this job, I, I, I want to finish my term. But because I want to protect my constituency, it means I'm not going to lose my, my position, you know, it's okay, I guess, I, I'll, and I can afford a thousand dollars, so. You know, if I have to go to jail for six months, I'll just ask the sheriff to give me more than just hamburgers.
I'll give you a bread and butter, I can miss.
Okay, Mario, just in case you don't know or figured, we were a public comment. Okay, any, any other public comment? Do not, then, we'll move to item one point six, which is a total of minutes of regular meeting of June 2020, those minutes are in your packet.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona to approve the minutes of Rule eight, 2020. There's a second by Commissioner Urielas. Do we have any discussions or corrections? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all of the votes saying aye. That motion carries. Two point one is approved, Mr. Mario, you can. We have the bond for Arturo Romo, he is a, I guess one of the deputies that the sheriff has for.
Reserve?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Seconded by Commissioner Urielas, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion carries. Okay, we have the monthly report from JP one, JP two, JP three, JP four. They were all here, apparently they don't have any questions, the reports are pretty straightforward. If you all have any questions about that, please let me know and we'll get it approved. There's a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona to approve. There's a second by Commissioner Urielas, any discussion? For purposes of disclosure, if the general public wishes to see any of these reports, they will communicate with my office, I'll be glad to give them to you. All in favor?
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion carries. We have the report by our district clerk, Ms. Malicela Monsalves, our county clerk, Mr. Mario Z. Garcia, for the month of May 2020. We have the monthly report from the commissioners, and those are in our packet. If anybody wants to see any one of those items, please let us know. Motion?
Okay.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Seconded by Commissioner Urielas. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion carries. We have two point nine, which is approved, we rescind the motion of item two point two, two, one, two, of the regular Commissioners Court meeting of May twenty-six, 2020. Let me see what that is.
That was for the, I think, the other meeting.
Oh, okay. What, what, what was the action we took?
The board, uh, the mayor's board, that we were gonna quickly, uh, with the, uh, consensus of Commissioners' Court, he was gonna withhold you for the precincts.
Okay. Well, why, why, why would we wanna rescind that?
If it was approved, the Commissioners' Court, they were gonna be on the move.
Oh, so we're gonna rescind that, then, or?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Urielas.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion carries. You don't have anything on there that you about that?
No. On May twenty-six, it was approved.
Did you put nothing on there, like the maintenance and all stuff? Okay, two point, uh, two point nine is, uh, two point ten is discussion and appropriation approved to hire one secretary for all or any precincts.
What this about is, uh, is, uh, the secretary will be under.
I can't hear you, Mike.
Oh, sorry. What this about is, is the secretary will be under the jurisdiction of the Commissioners.
Okay, so who, under whose budget this is gonna be?
Mine.
Okay. Alright, so, do you have a vacant position for that?
Uh, open on three one, uh, in budget, and we also move money around to where we could, uh, hire her. To meet an amendment?
Well, uh.
We took money from all the precincts, from our, our budget.
So, um.
If you wouldn't let us, or, uh, uh, if we wouldn't approve it, then we, we done it already in the minutes, hire her with the new budget budget. But if we approve it, then we can hire her and, and do it, we can all move money from our budget.
Your budget?
To my budget.
Okay, so, uh, we have to create a new position, right? We, we gonna do in the middle of the year?
Yeah. You got the budget number?
Well, yeah, they have a budget number for the money, but, uh, we need to create a new position, that's why I'm saying, if you have a.
No, you're right, that's, like, we create a position, we're violating our own policies. Yeah, now, now, now it's, okay, uh, what we gonna do, uh, in budget then?
Uh, the reason we were gonna do it under my budget was because I have an active position that's vacant. We didn't have to create a position. I have the money for that position, that's why I wanted to do, that was the easiest way of handling. But if you're gonna do it, you need to create a position, unless you have a vacant position, like, if any one of you guys have a vacant position.
I've got the charity's position. Would they qualify?
Yeah, it's a vacant position.
Yeah, charity, charity is one of the projects we're working for, I thought.
What do you mean?
And also, uh, I lost, este, uh, Ruchy Galan, and I also lost, uh, uh, what was that one? Don't matter. I think every position is open.
Okay.
And we'll do that with you. So in that case, we don't have to do the budget adjustment, correct? The money is there for.
Uh, do you wanna pay the right budget, no?
Sorry, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I'm clear, yeah, no, I'm clear for you. If I'm short, then I'll pay the other.
Nah, of course, if you have a position there, you're not gonna pay more than what that position is paying. Uh, you have the, the fringe benefits and everything.
Okay.
So we're doing it from precinct threes? I, I didn't hear.
Yeah, it's from precincts, he has an open position.
Okay.
It's that way, 'cause otherwise, if you create a new position, you're gonna be violating the policy, we said, we don't create positions during.
It's coming out of his budget, his precinct.
We're gonna move money around, right?
Yeah.
No.
You can, you want to, but.
He's got, he's got.
You say just in case.
Okay, why don't you wait, if you need the money, you move it around? Right, go on. And, and if you don't need the money, okay.
So we can move, move on to do this hiring?
Yes.
Okay. And we, uh.
So. There's a motion by Commissioner Van Carmona?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Urielas. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion carries.
So, not Judge, are we, are we gonna office serve here?
I don't know, we're.
I.
Or him?
Sure, I, I was thinking, uh, asking the judge later on, so we don't, uh, have to inconvenience him, uh, that I wanted to check the, uh, hail gears, so we can, uh, picture, uh, and put it there.
We have, we have several.
There's several here, several offices.
Yeah, this is more central. It's more central here.
Here, they're all the days, so.
Central.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. No, sadly, the courthouse, no, we can offer. Anyway, it's better, el, la presidenta donde estaba, cuando estaba Cristina, que fue a su moto de mi. Uh, two point eleven, is discussion and appropriation is gonna approve to purchase a Toro, new master zero turn for the Cariso Springs golf course and one Jopson motor mini split unit for the clubhouse.
Okay, Judge, this is a total of, uh. Three, three pieces of new equipment, one, uh, new motor for, for, you know, a motor going that's, that needs a new motor, a, a new motor. And a, uh, a mini split unit, that's an air conditioning unit for the clubhouse. So, it's three pieces of equipment, one motor, and one air conditioning. Uh, for a total of seventy-four thousand dollars, coming out of the CO seventeen. We have a balance of a hundred and nine thousand dollars still in the COs.
After that or before that?
Before that, before this expense, we have a hundred and nine, four hundred seventy-two dollars left, uh, balance in the CO seventeen.
Well, let me, let me, let me, let me give you my two cents, well, I don't have a problem with the motor, uh, zero turn, but I have a problem with upgrading the clubhouse.
With the what?
With the mini split unit, huh? That's his job, if he wants to. Okay, remember, the premise is, I know we need a golf course, I don't have a problem with the golf course. I wanted to be versatile, I don't have a problem with it, but I told you I didn't want to have another dependency. Okay, and he's keeping all the profits, he's doing whatever he needs to do. He needs to, he needs to maintain the golf course, that was the agreement that we had. We agreed to pay his electrical beer bill so that he could get up and going, that's what I. We have to work towards, taking that person that we pay that works out there, that has to work itself out. He has to be totally dependent with the self, I do not wanna upgrade the clubhouse, he needs to upgrade the, the clubhouse, he needs to do that. The power tools, they belong to us, I don't have a problem with those.
So the, the air conditioning unit, you, you're not in favor of, is what you're saying? Okay. It's, uh, uh, my response is, it's part of the building, uh, we built, uh, we built new restrooms out there. That's the only way I can respond to that.
Yeah, we did that before, before, uh, I think we did it as part of the.
Joe Cook, Joe Cook was the manager, yeah.
We did that as part of the, that contract, but Joe Cook put a lot of money to it.
Well, that's fine, Judge, it, it, so, so I won't bring any expenses, that they're part of the clubhouse building. Back in, I guess, is that right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
You know, the question I had was, on the zero turn, how much is that?
Uh, they're all in here. I've got a this.
Okay.
Oh, we're going through, um, uh, professional turf products, they're Toro, Toro products, and they're all on the board, by board, they're all by board. Okay, Judge, if, if that's the case, you know, that's the way we do it. I'll, I'll tell him he needs to pay for the air conditioning. It's just a small unit, but they've got one in there now, it's not sufficient to cool and heat the place. It's eighteen hundred dollars is the cost to, I'll tell him, you'll have, you'll have to pay for that. He doing, he's doing renovations to the, uh, all those old, uh, cart sheds, the old sheds. He's doing that, he's paying for that, you know, 'cause he's.
But he rents those, I suppose, rent out, yeah.
He's, he's covering all the expenses, labor, and. And he's covering everything else except equipment and what we purchased up to now. He's paying for everything else. So, everything except the mini split unit?
That, that's, that's my, that's what I, that's what I would do.
Again, my, my contention is, it's part of the building, it just stays there, you know? When he needs that, that piece of equipment stays there.
Motions?
Motion to approve, uh, item two point eleven.
Motion to approve two point eleven by Commissioner Urielas? Well, he, he, his motion is to approve the whole thing, then, it depends what you all want to do. Right, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. Uh. Whatever places the court, if, if the court is, you know, wants to go by the, the judge's opinion, then remove the mini split unit. Let's do that, Judge, I'll amend my motion to, uh, remove the mini split unit.
So, your, your motion, okay, the first motion dies for lack of second. Uh, so his motion is to approve the two Toro zero turn motors?
Correct.
Okay.
Seconded.
There's a second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, do we have any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All that oppose?
Aye.
Uh, three, four, and one against my, motion carries.
Thank you all.
Two point one two is open bid for the construction of metal roof for county equipment in the precincting backyard. We have two bids according to Mr. Mario here. One is available for the county park, and it has no name, so I'm gonna open a no name on third. The no name is from, from Pedro Jimenez, twenty-four thousand dollars. Mr. Alonso. The second one is from R and J Eagle Construction. Is that good, Ben? Uh, nineteen thousand, twelve hundred.
The motion.
Uh, yeah.
We're gonna move the, the, and, and give it to the editor, and to revise it.
There's a motion by Commissioner, uh, wanted to accept, close the bidding process, and to forward the bid to the editor for revision.
Seconded.
There's a second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, discuss. The only discussion that I will have with, this is, uh, what is the guy that, uh, he did the, uh. By board, that fell down, that was much longer. The reason why we put all that rubber covering on the flooring here in the courthouse, an extra forty-five thousand to be covered. It's a network, just, just for your information purposes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion carries. The next item is the report by the chief, we, uh, the assistant fire chief, we already have his report in the packet, so. Motion to approve.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Urielas. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Two point one four, discussion appropriation is gonna open bid for the air conditioning repairs. Just one, what else? One from Cool Comfort. Uh, he has several. Several bids for several items that we, we're gonna use to compare. And they're all individually stated, like, example, condenser fan motor replacement, three hundred bucks, condenser fan motor, three seventy-five, replace compressor, labor five hundred, uh, two ton electric system, three thousand eighty-five, three ton Goodman electric system, thirty-four, and so on, so on, he goes down the line. Uh, motion to accept, impose the bidding, moved by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Urielas.
Who, who is that, Judge, who is?
Cool Comfort.
Cool Comfort.
Cool Comfort is the guy that does all our air conditioning right now.
Out of Crystal City?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, we communicated with several people, but, uh, nobody wanted that. Okay, uh, do this to Mr. Arbiter, see what he's got, see what, all those in favor?
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion carries. Number two point one five is the approval to, uh, discussion appropriation is gonna approve of interlocal agreement between County of Demet and City of Cheshaw. When is it come to, Commissioner?
This, uh, it was, it, he was signed in July, but he was acted on, uh, June twenty-fifth.
Okay. So this is going, this is basically, it's, it's the same contract, the only thing we're gonna do is change the dates?
Yes, dates.
Okay. Commissioners?
Okay.
There's a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona to approve. Seconded by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Do we have any discussion? Any discussion, Commissioner?
The, the only discussion is, I wanna thank the Commissioners' Court for helping the City of Ashington in many ways, in the water, in the sewer, in the fire. Uh, City of Ashington, we're just getting stable, and, uh, we need a lot of help in the county, whatever county, the Commissioners, uh, and they gave red, red material, so, and then, uh, Ms. Valerie went over there and told us she was gonna help us with the street. And then I talked to you, Judge, and you told us that you're gonna help us, so we wanna have this interlocal agreement with the city and the county to help us, uh, in many ways.
Okay.
And then the other one is in, uh, we're gonna have a, uh, an election in, uh, in May, and it was changed to November, so now we're coming, we're gonna come to the county, if we can make a joint election with Mr. Mario on November, because.
Okay.
We're gonna try to pass, uh, a sales tax, the money that comes in, it's half percent, to improve our, the streets, so it can only be used for street, anything that comes in from the, uh, half percent to the city can only be used, if it passes, can only be used to repair streets.
Can, uh, can we add a quarter of a cent over there?
I guess you can.
Well, but, no, they're not gonna help us, they're not gonna, they won't help us.
They're only gonna be the push.
Yeah, no, okay, I was thinking, uh, if you pass, uh, uh, half percent for the county too, it will not, it, it's just gonna hurt you, no, okay. If, if we're gonna be on the county, on, on the county, alright?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Okay, the one?
And the other, uh, we're, we're never gonna talk to your secretary to schedule a meeting, because we have several items that we need to talk to the county judge, and then we need it to the Commissioners, from.
You mean, you want a joint meeting?
Uh, no, not a joint meeting, but to talk to you and then discuss the items, we have several items on the, from fire department and animal control, uh, there's several, so we wanted to talk to you.
The animal control, we haven't been able to hire somebody that, that's what it to do, the animal control?
Well, we can talk to the City of Cariso, and they're gonna get together, so we're trying to get Ashington and Bigwells and Cariso together in the county to do maybe a county wipe, I talked to the city manager, and he's all for it, I talked to the mayor, they got a lot of plans on.
For, I don't mind.
Yeah, okay, well, that's, well, I'll talk to Mr. Lefty and give myself, and I'm going.
And we need to talk to the guy right here sitting on the right. With the street.
Thank you.
Yes.
For helping the City of Ashton.
How long, how long is the, uh?
Three more.
How long is the agreement bid we have?
It's, uh, here.
But it's been in effect for a while.
Oh, for a while, yep.
Everything working good so far?
So far, yes, especially when we needed an artist truck, and we need a help on the water leads, and then the street improvements, and material, the, the county.
I know the Commissioners is willing to help to repair streets, uh.
Yes, yes.
Alright, good.
Commissioner, uh, I was talking to the judge room, because that, uh, mayor from Bigwells, you know, we're gonna start doing, picking up all that brush, and they said they were gonna pilot, it's sort of like a bomb plant, and, and then they were gonna call, uh, Austin, so they could have a practice with the fire department, they said they have a fire department, gonna let them our, our, our water out, so make a practice. Este, maybe, I, I know, I would, I go through the city, the streets, and there's another degree there, maybe we can help you with that also, so. That town should build, that, we can, it's a little mine, I, we, I would see my, my father, and then would probably help you out.
Yeah, but, uh, Ms. Valerie helped us move some of the stuff, but we were hauling it, and we got cited, not cited, but investigated by DCQ about a month ago, and they told us we couldn't burn it, and we couldn't haul it to a location unless we have a permit, and it has to be mulched, so we're in the process of buying a mulcher to mulch it, he said, if you clean this area, fine, you can burn it, but you cannot bring it from south to north and hide it here and burn it, you cannot do that, so.
No, but, okay, we are.
That's, and then to, it's, it's confusing, DCQ got after us, and we, we quit burning and hiding the, hauling, so now we come to the landfill. And it cost us a, a dump truck, it cost us about ninety to a hundred and twenty dollars a load.
Este, llámelo vamos with our dentil.
Yeah, so maybe we can work together.
You know, what, what the Commissioner is trying to tell you is that, if you use it for a specific purpose, such as for training purposes?
Yeah.
I don't think DCQ is gonna.
Now they will not help you. The guy off the Crystal City, I don't, uh, I'm, I'll have to.
For doing a practice, right?
Uh, because it was, it was hauling into.
No, no, okay, that's what I'm saying, but if, if you haul it to burn it, you, it, it's like, like Carlos says, you can't give a, a private citizen a coke that belongs to different county, but you can give a private citizen a, a, uh, a coke, if what you do is for the public purpose. Training your fire department is a public purpose. So if you are gonna gather that equipment, because you need to train the fire department on how to turn down, and how to put out a rush fire, then you can do it, okay, then it becomes an illegal action, so that's what he's saying, that they're doing.
So that's what he's saying that they're doing.
That's, that's true, and we're talking to Carmen Ramirez, uh, she's the lady in charge of the permits, so I'll give you the number, we'll, we'll chisel it away. Thank you.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Two point one six is approved to renew the health insurance with tax.
I'm just proposing to keep the same for this year.
Sure. Motion to approve by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
By Commissioner Urielas. All in favor?
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion carries. Two point one seven, approval, a proposal based for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, but then workshop on July fifteen and sixteen, twenty twenty. Problems?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Alonso, uh, Mike Urielas.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso, uh, Urielas. Alonso Carmona, do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Three point one, request approved to purchase two motor roller rails for patrol unit. Okay, uh, chief.
Yes, sir.
What are these two motor roller rails for? Uh, don't, don't all our cars that we're buying, uh, buy all the equipment?
Yes, we do, sir.
So.
And the sheriff's supposed to come, he will be here in a little bit, he can explain everything, uh, in the center, bring the paperwork over here. Because we had gone the, the cop yet until today.
Okay.
So give me here in a few minutes, if you don't mind.
Uh, three point two is, uh, request approved for Sheriff Mayor Boyd, Richard Ramirez, Abraham Gudson, Gugl Hudson to attend the Sheriff's Association Texas One Four, excepting annual training conference and expo on July twenty-third to twenty-ninth in Fort Worth, Texas. Uh, let me ask you a question, Carlos. Do we have the authority as the, as the Commissioners Court to approve or deny the travel?
I thought you did.
Well, once we put the, because this is what I've been told before by, not exactly the sheriff, but other elected officials, that it's a general question that they've asked me, and I, I haven't, the only time I remember is when we had to deal with it. That once we put the money in the budget for travel, then the discretionary on the, the elected official to decide here or there, and there's nothing to do about it?
Well, it has to be with the, I don't know whether, um, I didn't already say yes or no, but they also have to fill out the guidelines, so you can't just take off on a Saturday, you have to or the trains are gonna be on Tuesday, uh, kind of deal, uh.
Because this seminar starts on a Friday.
Yeah, but this, well, actually it doesn't, it starts until Monday, Monday. It's a general session, the one that they, that they're required to, so basically everything else, I mean, they, since it starts, we have to go up there on Sunday.
Right.
Uh, anything prior that, that would be, unless, if they were board members, then that would be, that would not be an issue because we also pay for that.
But this starts on a Friday.
No, it starts, if you go look at Monday morning general session.
Mm-hmm, oh, yes, I mean, it starts on Monday, I'm sorry.
So basically, what we do is change for Sunday night.
Yes. So it would be Sunday night, Sunday night, Monday night, Tuesday night, and Wednesday night. No, not even Wednesday night, because it ends at eleven, yeah?
Yeah, so it would be.
Sunday, Sunday night, it'll be Sunday night, Monday night, and Tuesday night. Okay, that's one problem that I have with it. The other problem that I have with it, right, is four people are going.
Yeah, I, I had that question also, how come we've got four people? And who are these four people?
Well, actually, we didn't, it, it started, it ended on Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Yeah, so at late.
Well, but they can, they can stay there that night because five is eight-hour drive also.
Tuesday is the twenty-eighth? On Tuesday is the twenty-eighth?
Well, but they have to stay there because it's, it's like.
Yeah, but it's the twenty-eighth. And they missed, they missed, started from the twenty-third, that's seven days. July the twenty-third to the twenty-nine.
See, that, that, yeah, that's the problem because they have.
So, past buck needs to be here.
So we're talking about Monday night?
Sunday night, Tuesday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday night.
Yes, three nights, okay, so, uh, now the other problem that I have, the other question is, uh, there's four people, so, I don't know, I, I want, I wish restricted to two people, that's what I.
My concern is that the reason the experience, uh, everybody get their hours early because nobody's getting any hours right now, so they're behind on, or something like that.
Yeah, everybody behind right now because they're not having any classes.
Okay.
So this is the first. All right, then this is, uh.
Yeah, I wasn't anything since.
Yeah, that's, that's.
But some of these people have already gone last year, or whenever you got it.
Well, it's a cycle, it's every.
Well, I mean, uh, my, my thing is, uh, I see two that probably already gone, I know of one, that's gone with the server.
So.
Well, you can, you can explain the angle.
Well, I wanna wait for him, uh, I'm not gonna wait for a review, but.
Okay.
Este, I think we need, uh, to have a motion to approve the, the nights that we discussed, and that, uh, unless if they don't have the hours, then, okay, they, I guess they can go, but, but if they don't, if they already have the hours and we've limited this to the two that do not need, that, that need the hours. Motion made by Commissioner, did, did you get it, did I get it, Mario, straight?
Yeah.
Motion made by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
This, second by Commissioner Urielas.
Question.
Yes.
What are gonna be the dates? The, the dates of the travel, what? What are the dates?
Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine?
What are these, huh?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine.
Yep.
Not the twenty-fifth. Not Saturday to the twenty-fifth, okay. But make sure that's clear, twenty-six to the twenty-ninth.
Well, Carlos usually keeps an hour and a half, but, uh, sometimes send us.
There is. All right.
Sheriff, we're on the travel request, uh, the, the rule that we, we have, uh. Well, it's not our rules, uh, the government's. We do not, we do not approve travel unless you're gonna do for the training, uh, you requested Fridays, Saturdays, and the seminar doesn't start till Monday, so the county is willing to approve Sunday night, Tuesday night, and Wednesday night?
Wednesday night. Yeah, it should've been Saturday. The, the train actually starts Saturday, we have a training session Saturday afternoon.
Starts on Sunday.
Starts on Monday?
Saturday afternoon. Training session three P M to five P M, Saturday afternoon.
The general session thirty is that, that's what, that's what we're going with.
Well, that's what we hope by, we have things, we have training that, and if I have to get the, the exact, uh, what the exact classes to teach or classes to have, but someone, you know how it is, I mean, they.
On Saturday, Carlos, it says training session after the golf tournament.
That would be Saturday to the twenty-eighth?
Yes, it should not be five P M.
Twenty-fifth, huh, Marion? Saturday to the twenty-fifth? July the twenty-fifth?
That's not my call.
I don't know, that's, but still, I mean, we're gonna. The, the.
This, what we can is this, this is general session.
Yeah, but there's nothing on Sunday?
Yeah, that's the deal.
But I'm very afraid there's nothing on Monday, well, the general session, I don't know what the general session is.
Just for a training.
Well, I, I don't, I don't have a computer because.
He's got training session on Saturday. I don't know what that is, but that's what he's.
Is there a training session for all four people on Saturday?
Yes.
And then there's nothing on Sunday, is that correct?
Commissioner, according to this, it says, but we have training every day, I mean, I, I can, I can call the, I can call our association, uh, I'm not going to the office, but I can call them from the house and, uh, get them to give me a detailed, uh, if that's what you want, I think that's what happened last year. But I know that we have, we have, there's classes offered every day. Whether you wanna go to or not, but if you don't want some, you don't need your mandatory classes, that's what I'm getting.
Just trying to figure out the, the dates, the correct dates for travel. If you had it from the twenty-third.
I mean, all for whatever, I'm, I'm, I have to get this, I don't, you know, I lose my license, the debt, I mean, we'll pay for it.
No, we don't have a problem with you doing your, we just wanna make sure that, that, we cannot pay, you know, if we pay, you look in the training, that's just, I was giving you our money, we can't do that, we've never done, we don't do it either, we're pretty strict about, we, I, if you want to make.
And in all honesty, we may like, I mean, as of now, we're gonna have the, we, we, uh, our conference, but I don't know how it's, how that's gonna look in a month.
Yeah.
It may be canceled, because we honestly.
So if, uh, if, if you, all these four officers need hours, we don't have a problem with it, but if, if, if they have their hours, then it's not gonna get approved.
Nobody has her hours because this is the training site, and we've, we're, I hope the state, and we talked about, I don't think we do, but I hope the state gives us a timeframe at the end of it to catch up because we have, we don't have to get the classes.
Okay, guys.
Marion, all these four, well, I understand you and, uh, and, uh, go into this conference, the other two people, why do they need to go? Two classes, why do they need to go?
Yes, sir, so they, all four of us need these classes to, for our license, this is required classes that we have to take, uh, every site, that, and we just started the site, and we haven't had any classes with COVID nineteen to be able to go to, so that's why I put that, the people all.
The, the, it's the same, right?
All the same. We got a lot of questions.
Aren't, aren't these, uh, conferences restricted to the sheriff and, uh, and the, uh?
Any, any peace officer.
Chief?
Of course, any peace officer, any deputy sheriff, any police officer, street police officer. Uh, any, anybody that has a Texas peace officer.
What, uh, Hugo Garza, do you mean with long campaign?
Yeah, because he tested out. He was retired, he didn't have his license, he was retired, worked for it, so he tested, and so he's required to get, uh,
That's good.
Training hours, just like your bills for the new site.
And we paid for him, but. Well, he just started, so he doesn't need any hours, right? Hugo?
Well, that's what I'm saying, he tested, he didn't go to the academy, said to anybody else, so he didn't get hours like the rest, he just went and challenged his exam because he has that, if you, if you retire as a fellow agent, if you're studying, then you're eligible to go to test out, otherwise you're gonna take the test, if you pass it, if you fail it, then you go to the, uh, the academy. You pass it, they'll, they'll give them your license, however, you're still mandated to take those hours that are, that are during, during the training site.
Okay. Uh, if that's the case, uh, if, so our motion is going to need to approve the, the travel, uh, I, 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 I guess it's paid at Sunday, because I, it doesn't, if you give us something, they show what you do Sunday. To approve the travel for the, for, uh, with the understanding that their mandatory hours are taken.
Yes.
Motion? Motion by Commissioner, uh, Urielas.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
All that oppose?
Aye.
You oppose? We have three, four, and one option.
Judge, um, yeah, everybody needs to, you can provide some, Commissioner, right?
Yeah, he's gonna provide that, what they're gonna do Sunday, and they'll, they need the hours. Three point two, well, three point one, because we didn't do anything, uh, request approved to purchase two motor roller rails for patrol unit. Um, I'm assuming that means units, right? You need, you, you need, uh.
Need two radios, one, we need to talk about this last week, we need the, need for the two grab vehicles, because the, I was saying to Carlos, what I, I didn't have the answer for this last, I just assumed, but I went back and talked to Selena and she got with Mr. Mendez for the state, so what happens is, on, whenever you buy for this black silver, it has a specific brand for a, a police radio. So whenever you, if it didn't, then we can include that in the vehicle, like we do the radar, everything else, but you can't do that, and there's, so they have to request separate. So we did request radio separately, come the, they denied, so, uh, we're separate, have.
So we got the car, they, they paid the car, we paid the radio?
Yes, and, and there was money, uh, Judge, there is money in the budget, uh, under equipment.
Oh, okay, but, uh, the, because we asked him, and because most of the time we order the stuff, and they got the radio in there, but he didn't wanna answer, so you're telling me that they disa, disallowed the radio cost? I don't have a problem paying for a radio for a car. If they give you a car, pay a radio, not a good deal, not a bad deal.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, motions, hey? Motion made by Commissioner, uh, Carmona, Juan Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urielas, all in favor?
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion carries by unanimous vote, three point three is status reports, we got. Oh, okay, you give it last time?
Yeah, just, um, first thing.
How many did he get, has my, is that pretty?
I don't know, put his ass in jail.
Huh?
I'm just a ranger.
Sure, he needs to know, and I, I, I'll get a hold of.
I don't think they do it, so.
Huh?
I don't know.
Well, he needs to.
Nah, it's not like you doing it.
Get yourself a mask?
I will, thanks.
All right. Uh, jail, do we have jail status today, or no?
No, sir.
No? Okay. All right, no action on three point three, no reported on your best one. Four point one is approved to purchase a standard service body to be installed in an F two fifty four pickup for sanitation department, Mr. Danny, what, what are you trying to do?
I know you asked me something along these lines, but what is it, please?
The four pickup, we gotta put a service box, I'm gonna take the box off and put two boxes on it.
Ah, okay, uh, Eddie has a, a truck that doesn't sound too good, we're, is it, was our first truck we bought back, uh, we bought a Metroplex, we bought that service truck from, uh, Marvin, he done like two hundred thousand miles on it. Uh, so Richie's truck is just sitting there, so we, we, I told Eddie to give me a box, we tried to put that box in that truck, but they told us they had to do something, it was gonna cost us almost the same as buying a new one, and how much is a new one?
Uh, I think just four, uh.
I think it's like six thousand dollars, huh? It's gonna cost them like six thousand dollars to, to, uh, buy a new truck for Richie's truck and make it in two hours. I don't, I don't want it, it's just sitting there, we have insurance on it, so for six thousand bucks, I wanted to buy a new truck for, ready, we already have a truck, and I don't know, Richie's truck has like eight thousand miles on it. So that's what we wanna do, that's what that is about. I can't find the quote.
There's no quote.
No, there's no quote. Well, there's nothing else.
That's the, uh, the, I actually wanna buy two bucks.
Oh, okay. Two bucks?
There are two bucks, it's just a two bucks.
It's a two bucks for, for truck?
We got two quotes, hello?
What are you, what are you looking at?
We got two quotes and.
Let's see, from here on out, when they got, put those stickers with the, so that we can. Okay, here, I'm, I'm in the, on the treasures report, and I don't have anything here about. Uh, tell this young lady here to go get your copy.
Because this one, it says, uh, 900 dollars.
No, more than 900, but, it's like $6,000, but. Oh, it's right here, okay, it's right here. It's under four point one, it's point four point one. It's right before done, it says, uh, right after the sheriff's Motorola, bit, the contract, it's a contract, the Eagles, uh, checked on then. It's Motorola Solutions, and then it's a quote, and it's, it's, uh, $5,983 to, for the, for the bag and installation, right? Uh, here in San Antonio.
But the other was in Houston, huh?
We got another quote, it was $7,000, some odd dollars, and it was from Houston, and, uh, we found this other one, and it was cheaper and closer.
Are we, are we gonna take over that truck or not?
Excuse me?
Are we gonna take over that truck?
Which truck? Richie, it's our truck, it's that.
We would use it.
Yeah, yeah, for Eddie, for the carpet. Or we'll get him another truck? I don't like vehicles just sitting there, paying insurance and all this stuff.
You answered my question, we wanna buy another truck.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get him another.
Whenever that happens.
Just, any ques- any other question?
Do you have a motion?
Do you have motion? Motion by Commissioner Uriela. Seconded by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All or the vote? Motion carried by unanimous vote. Four point two is approved to rent RV spaces at the rodeo arena and conference center. Approved to set rates for the RV park at the rodeo arena and conference center. What do you have, Mr. Miranda?
We, uh, we got ten spaces, the, the, and since the rodeo was coming up, uh, Miranda and Christine got together with, uh, Wanda. And they charged, what's it, 30?
30 for both.
30 for?
The 30 and the 50 amp. It is 30 and 90.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, talk into the mic, can't hear you.
Uh, 30, $30 for the 30 and the 50 amp.
Oh, I'm sorry, the, the, $30 for the 30 amps and 30 for the 50 amps?
And it's just for every night.
Okay, so, uh, 30 amp and a 50 amp, do they split the same amount, Christine?
Well, the 50 is a little higher, but it's up to us, the court, uh, what do you wanna charge?
Okay, that's what, so what you ordered means what Wanda does?
Yes.
What do you guys wanna do?
Sounds good to me, sounds good.
Sounds good, good. Commissioner?
Motion.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Uriela?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner, uh, Carmona, do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abol? Motion carried. Four point three, approved to purchase two bucks for tools at the Metroplex.
Uh, the guy did it on two, uh, two bucks, and I put two tools together, uh, you know, just the new, new tool, they once fallen apart, don't they, I got it at the auction 10 years ago.
Oh, that's the one that was for $900?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, 18 something, yeah, man. It's just the two bucks.
Along with the 876, others on?
Not on the other.
997, car rental?
Yeah.
Why you want over the high?
It's the lowest. That's the lowest.
I think, I think others almost got that. Car rental's the other drink?
Car rental's 997 and 1800, Carrizo, R1800, and others on. So we're buying one for 997 and car rental? Motion. Motion to approve by Commissioner Uriela?
Thank you.
Seconded by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All or the vote? Motion carried, status?
That's all I heard, uh, Christine, I have something on the, uh, Dan, do we have anything on the lecture?
Still waiting on the publication period to play its course.
How does it look, Dan?
Well, we haven't heard anything from the state that said they've received any protest, Judge.
I can't hear you.
Good morning, Judge, I'm sure it's good to see y'all. We haven't heard anything from the state that they've received any word in terms of contesting.
Okay.
Case here, and so.
So nobody's contested?
We'll, we'll see, there's still a little, there's still some dice left for them to be able to do that.
How many days will they have?
Judge, it's gonna be a couple of weeks, maybe at the most, it's not much more than that.
Well, you usually get a right away, so.
Yes, sir, typically you do.
Alright, so, uh, let us, let me know when the date's up, so once you let me know the date is up for the protest. Then I can start working on buying that piece of property on the front.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
What else, Mr. Danny?
That's all I got, just, Christine?
I wanna ask a question, no, I wanna ask a question about the status reports.
Who, who, who do you wanna ask a question, Mr.?
On the RV park, would you please help other people other than the rodeo attend?
I don't think so, alright, Judge, it's just for, he's asking if we're gonna visit to anybody other than the rodeo, like, any customer can, can be.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that I, I don't wanna, because Richie at one time was saying, I'll stay there and I'll take care of the, of the, uh. The, the RV park, and I'll take care of the, the grounds during the weekends and stuff like that. So, uh, at, at that one, I always contemplated, I said, okay, that sounds like a good idea, right? But we don't need really security, because there's officers, there is, there's a lot of us. But keeping an eye on there, if anybody at the rodeo, but so that was, that one, I, I was contemplating, but I don't know how y'all feel about doing that. At one point, he, he asked us when he was here, he no longer here, so the question is smooth. But what if the other guy comes in here, because he says that during January, February, and March, you know, he spends a lot of time there. So I said, well, okay, I, I, I guess we'll ask the commissioners for the time, so, um. To answer your question, we're not gonna listen to anybody but people that are either having something to do with the arena, having something to do with, uh. With the rodeo.
Something on that, or also, but we're not gonna sue very soon, you know? We, like, uh, we'll start with, now he doesn't have to pay, or he has to pay, or say, now let's get away from that and everybody pays.
So, Paul, you, Paul, it's Paul.
There's only about three or four events, you know, the rodeo?
Yeah, three or four events, pero, that's what I'm saying, so like, somebody like Ricky, he was not gonna be the free, he was gonna have to pay.
Well, this, sometimes that's like, that's why we're getting trouble, is the benefits have to, if people pay, then the group doesn't pay, and all this running problem, yeah?
Well, if, if it's, uh, serves a public purpose, I, I mean, si, si cuando ellos hitos ahí ya said it there, I don't wanna charge them, you know? So there's things that, you know, we set the rule, I don't have a problem looking at any particular item, I don't have a problem.
But for the most part, everybody knows they have to pay, right?
Judge.
Yes, sir.
We, the, the Stock Show Association, probably, they're gonna have to pay, because a lot of, a lot of parents take their trailer and park it there in the side. If they're gonna use electricity, I think they, they have to pay.
They have, they have.
And then we have the cookhouse too, so we're gonna do it, try to do it annual, so there might be two events from the Stock Show. And then the prospect, so if they, they come on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, they go back, so there's more, more days that are gonna be realized.
We, we did it for the purpose of allowing people to bring their stuff, because they were, they were not complaining, but. They were asking that it would be nice if they had an RV park where they can park their, their horse trailers and all that, so, yeah, but we're gonna charge everybody. Anything else? Other, Christine, what was that?
Oh, okay, so, uh, reminder, we still have the food distribution tomorrow.
Good.
Uh, Commissioner, I wanted to pick up your no-boys and the trailer and some straps to dine, if we can, uh, park it in Commissioner Creasey's one county yard. I do, uh, I received a really nice generous donation from Blue Bonnet, uh, Energy Services. What they are going to do is they are on their way to Laredo to map today, in the afternoon, they are going to take a dry truck and a refrigerated truck. They're gonna bring that food over to us tonight, it's gonna stay overnight at the, at the county yard. And then in the morning, those would be two trucks we can unload before the other two trucks come in, so. I was thinking about pushing the times for the food distribution a little bit later. Because we have them at 10 o'clock right now. It all depends on how or when the guys can come and help me in the morning to, to unload those two trucks and wait for the other two trucks to come in. Um, we currently have four active cases of COVID. Uh, one person is at home and he's on the road to recovery, three people are still positive, but they are not in our county, they are receiving treatment elsewhere. And we do have, uh, people that are going for testing. I'm gonna, I received a call from the hospital. Uh, we're gonna discuss the testing kits and things like that, so I need to tell Mr. Graves to tell them after Commissioner's court. So we can see what kind of testing kits we can get in, and I've already talked to the state side and requested another mobile unit to come in to do testing as well. And that's what I have as of this morning.
Okay, did, uh, I told Commissioner Jordan, why not, how do we get the test kits?
Yeah.
Who gets the test kits? And why, uh, it takes us seven days when Pearson does them, the next day they get the.
Twenty-four to forty-eight.
So we need to find all those questions out, and, uh, uh, the Commissioner Urielas wanted us to have a joint meeting with the city, with, uh.
Yes, that was.
Hospital board, and I guess the school, I guess whoever, and, and to see what we're going to.
That was discussed this morning in my conversation with the, um, superintendent, and, uh, we'll be getting a, 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 a meeting set up pretty soon.
Okay.
Probably by Wednesday, because that'll be the next day that I have available, tomorrow I'm gonna be super booked with the food distribution. Right, that's all I have.
Miss Christine, how early are, that, those drives that you do for the testing?
Uh-huh.
Does a, a large crowd to, or?
This last time that we had testing, and I was able to put it on social media and in the paper two weeks in advance, and we had 12 people. So, I mean, I can bring them, I can continue bringing them, but if the people don't want to go get tested, there's not really much I can do.
Even this round, they're probably, if you're gonna have them, because it's, it's already spreading.
Yeah.
Well, it's not spreading, yes.
Or it's coming.
Yeah, it's here.
We, we need to make sure that the people that have contact with older are possibly, have not contacted, contracted the virus.
Yes, sir, and I believe that the, uh, the school district has already set that up, and there are kind of people getting tested. I know that, um, yesterday when I talked to one of the board members from the, um, housing authority, they had already, they were gonna send their employees as well to go get tested this morning. Uh, the mobile unit that I'm bringing in will be, of course, well, I wanna get the elderly tested, because they were in contact with them, and they are at the high bracket of the age. So I'm hoping that I can get the testing, I, I'm saying, I put the date of Friday, if not Friday, next Monday, Tuesday. So I'm hoping that the state turns around and gives me a really quick, uh, turnaround rate, so I can get everybody tested. Now, it's not only gonna be for the housing authority, since we'll have the test site here already, anybody else can come.
As you've already said, and this is.
No, sir, um, I think they, they're gonna use the little office here that they have, that little community center that they have here. And I will have a decon team, after the testing, the decon team will be coming in to decon the whole building.
You know, I, I, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I'm not speaking, I don't know about the COVID, nothing. But we had, had several people that have had direct contact with people that have contracted and they don't contract the virus. And then we have people that we don't know where they get it from. So, uh, bottom line is, we don't, I, we really don't know how people really get infected, because we've had instances where there's a lot of people, nobody gets contact, uh, contracted, and there, there's cases like. Isolated cases that we had, uh, so I don't know, but, so I guess the bottom line is we gotta be careful.
Yes, sir, just keep practicing the same thing.
Where, where are these people that are getting tested?
Can hear you, what? Can hear you.
Where are these people going to get tested?
Uh, several people went to here, the Pierceall Hospital, and some people were going to, uh, Uvalde, but you do need to go if, uh. This is what's gonna end up happening, people are gonna start getting turned away from the free testing centers because of the fact that they're free testing centers, and they're gonna get bombarded. So, in the conversation that I had this morning with my state representative, it's always best and it's easier to tell them to go to their official doctor. Talk to your doctor, tell your doctor that you have been in contact with these people, they will write you a note saying you need to go get tested, you can go to the testing site, and that's it. That means that their insurance is only charged that one time. So, and unfortunately, it's coming down to, you either have insurance or you don't, you pay for it, you find a free testing center, or, I mean, you, you pay for it. You find a free testing center, or your insurance takes it.
Is the hospital ready, ready for testing here?
The hospital is testing, but they are requiring that you have a doctor order.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So I am putting in the newspaper exactly what I just told you about the testing, um, please go to your physician, get a doctor's order, and I will list the places where you can go get tested. That's gonna be in the newspaper, I'm gonna send it off to climate today, I've already put it in the paper, I'll fall back, so I think it's best if I put it in the paper again.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, so the hospital is then doing the free test?
Us, we, we do not have a free testing site here in Zima County.
Okay, now, that question is also asked, how do you get a free testing site?
Yes, and I put that up onto the state side as well. So I should be, uh, been monitoring my email while I've been here, sorry, uh, but I'm trying to get a free testing center. Now, if we do get a free testing site, it's gonna be that one that rolls in that one day, like we have. As far as the center, uh, probably, you know, have other things, but I, at least I can ask questions and strike the ball.
How did Pearson get the free site?
They went, they actually went through their hospital, so that's why I need to, I have a conversation today, this afternoon, with Mr. Graves. To see, you know, what was the difference, what did Pearson do that, that our hospital did not do?
Uh, I can help you tomorrow with, what time are you gonna start? What time do you need?
The trucks will be out there at 7:00 in the morning, so I'll be out there at 6:30.
You need help earlier than?
Uh, yes, sir, uh, I, I believe we're gonna have three backhoes there, and if we can have the commissioners' traders, what I plan to do this time is. Unload what we have there, load up the commissioners first, and then when the second traders come in, unload that, so I'm gonna try to unload and everything. Try to get Ashton and Bebo's out of the way and whatever stuff there is gonna be for Carrizo.
Are we getting a little forklifts here, Daniel, are you bringing your forklift?
We're bringing, uh, two backhoes with the forks and another forklift.
You need my backhoe?
Yes, it's about.
My backhoe is out in the field.
Well, I have two there already, I'll have three, it's okay.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, but, um.
Send them wood.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Please go ahead, oh.
Yes, sir.
Uh, for the future, uh, you said a time, a certain few bits, uh. I don't want to just put it in the afternoon, we didn't have a problem with that, we have.
Yes, sir.
We tell those people, the reason I'm telling you is I think getting headaches all week long, and people not getting their commodity, or they have to wait and everything else, it's just, I don't wanna.
I, I.
Just rule, but, oh, just for the time in the afternoon, that's what we do for the time, we decide.
I, uh, I set it up that last time because of the, you know, the try, try to get the food, uh, but since we're gonna have food here early, we're not gonna have, you know, we, I think we'll cut our, our time. I did set at 10 o'clock, so that gives us plenty of time, I think, to get the food out to you. Um, I, I can leave it at 10 o'clock, as long as the girls, the girls will be there early, and they're gonna start doing the intake, so once we start rolling now, they'll go a little bit faster.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, that then it's gonna get in the demo, okay, those people move.
And I understand, we had people here, we weren't gonna start until 9:30, and we had people here at 5:30 already lining up. You know, but. Yeah, and unfortunately, that's something that's out of our control.
Right, well, that's why I, I said, put it later, I mean, you, you have time for that time, certainly, they can wait, one o'clock in the afternoon is perfect, they, they can wait.
Mr., uh, also this time, we had several people that got food here, checked on them to a few places.
Yeah, so that's why I put it in the paper, that we need to be registered in that town, because when I started going over the numbers, there was at least three to four families that hit all three places. So that means, you know, other families, you know, unfortunately, that we go to the.
So, uh, we have, we have checked our IDs, and they don't have valid ID with their, if we're not gonna.
Yeah, they don't have a mask, you don't have to serve them. And they don't have their trunk, sir, their, we have to put now, especially now that we have active cases in our county, we have to be able to put that food in their trunk. We cannot allow them to open their doors, we cannot allow that. So, you know, these are things that I did put in the, in, in the newspaper, and these are things before we even start letting them in, when we're doing the registration. So, you know, these are things that I did put in the, in, in the newspaper and these are things before we even start letting them in when we're doing the registration and the tracking, the girls will be able to say, I'm sorry, we can't serve you, this is fine. And, um, uh, we'll have an officer with them.
And maybe the, the girls can, uh, make sure when they come to the girls, that don't even think that they have the trunk and whoever has stuff in their trunk, tell them you need to go.
Yeah.
Dump everything in the truck and come back and get back in line.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, so I will have, uh, an officer there with the girls in case anybody starts getting out of hand. Yes, sir, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anything else? Um, five point one is budget adjustment within the department for the county jail. And four, five point two is budget adjustment within the department for R and B three, three and six. Do you have any, any comments on those?
I don't think that, uh, five point two going to that's all correct.
Okay. So, uh, we need a motion to approve five point one and we're not gonna take any action on five point four. Motion made by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner Orealas. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in a hope? Motion carries. Five point three is the, the, uh, monthly report from county treasurer, Mr. Martina, to the month of May. What happened to Mr. Martina?
Okay. He's, he has a situation.
Huh? What happened to Mr. Martina?
The phone.
What? This is the county treasurer's, um, report?
I think he should be here, cause he's never, never here.
He's in.
You're sick? I can't hear you.
He is not coming in because he doesn't, he's just giving the report out.
Oh, like he hasn't, there was a.
Yeah, he's just here.
You're here?
Cause I got other items.
If you wanna, if we want, we'll have to pick a next. Next time, Mr. Tannis, the financial part is pretty important.
You say he's in quarantine, is that?
Well, he's, yeah, he's had issues, I think he might, yeah.
Okay, okay.
His wife, he's somebody who.
Good. Okay, uh, so you're gonna handle his report?
Yes, sir.
What do we got?
A lot of money.
So we have no problems with, uh, meeting our budget, we have no problem with our general fund out?
Yes, sir.
All the money is still in the bank?
Yes. And like I, you know, uh, what we did in February when we went with the, with our, um, investor, our, a broker, he was able to get, uh, the rates real, they're high compared to what they are now. So we were able to get everything over one percent and right now we're looking at point one percent interest, so.
Point one percent?
Yeah, I mean, everything is basically slated down to even the class investments, tax pool and everything is gonna be, they're headed that way. So it's gonna be.
Next to nothing.
Yes. So basically, our, the revenue for next year is gonna be close to zero, I mean, minimal.
On what?
Well, minimal on what the, the daily actions, but what we already had planned, it'll be the same as usual. Whatever we had tied up by the CD, the CDs, we had good rates, when we reviewed, they're gonna be a lot lower. Super low.
Okay.
Mr. Pibega, Commissioner Orealas said that we have quite a bit of money on, on CO seventeen and he is only showing thirty-four thousand.
Because we have the other portion, we have it through class, you look, you'd have to go back to class investments. That's what we have in the bank.
Uh, uh, exactly, I, I, I know what you're saying, uh, what I'm asking is, how do we know how much money we have there? If you only got thirty-four thousand a year? I, I know, I know you did, uh, the, the, they're from.
Oh, you, correct.
Oh, you can provide us the, the.
The left portion. Because he's only doing that on a quarterly basis.
But my question is, how do we know? I know you're telling me that we can collect all of that, but what can we use out of there? That's what I'm trying to say.
We're keeping track of that, uh, but he's got, yeah.
Remember. A, a lot of those monies are, were allocated by departments, by precincts, so, uh, I have not used the, the money. Okay, uh, so there's gonna be some monies there that, that, that are still pending to be used.
You're dealing with an angel, that's why I'm asking, who's, what do we have from who?
Oh, okay, he wants to know for you, separate it.
I will get to that afternoon, I'll bring the, I'll, I'll give each commissioner the breakdown for everything, for policy.
Seventeen, eighteen and.
Thanks.
Cause I, I know I haven't, you know, seen one thirty on nineteen.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Well, because the engineer and all this, uh, I will get to.
Thank you, Juan, thank you for your generosity.
But I will get to, yes, we have, we can be tracked with, yes, sir.
So you haven't done nothing on the road, on your road? No, no, pero, you have not done nothing yet, oh, man?
But the engineer is also coming out there, the engineering is also coming out there.
Yeah, well, the engineering fellow, as far as something, make sure we have done.
Okay, no, no, that's fine, but we're, the engineer is in charge of that.
And who, who, who give, uh, who give authority to pay them if I wanna pay?
Cause you signed up on it.
Sure.
Huh?
I'm, I'm a PO.
Yes, sir.
I haven't signed anything, I haven't requested anything.
Well, in that, in that case, he hasn't gotten paid, until you sign up on it. Sorry, Dan.
Okay, uh, so any other questions on Tannis' report? Not motion to, to approve? Motion made by Commissioner Alonso Carmona to approve? Second, by Commissioner Juan Carmona, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five point four is the financial report from our county, uh, Mr. Carlos Pedera for the month of May.
The report you have is correct, the only thing that's not correct is the date, it has May on yours.
I already have one, Carlos.
I know, but it says May, I understand.
And?
I know.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, all of you should just come in the front.
I would have done that, but they, they gave it to me.
No, but the matter front pays, come on.
No. No.
This, is this what you call the excuse of one?
Well, this one is May, too.
I, it's May, but your, the one that we gave you is June.
June thirty.
Right.
But it's around May on that.
Yeah.
No tags or the numbers.
Right, no tags or the numbers. So, what we've got is, right now, through the end of May, it's sixty, in total, it's sixty thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. Uh, and I also have a chart here for the, on the state comptroller's office.
Wait, Carlos, you told me that this year's budget was twenty-one million dollars?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I thought it was, I thought it was a little bit after, it was like twenty.
Well, the twenty-one includes, um, sorry. Remember, it, also, that includes the renovations of jail, which you have.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
And this one, remember, I'm glad.
No?
Uh, the state comptroller's office, I'm sorry, we have it, that's right. Yeah. Yeah, uh, if you look at it, for June, we received three hundred and nine thousand dollars and previous months it's been two hundred and thirty-three thousand. So, it's actually going up.
The sales tax?
The sales tax.
Really? Oh, we still have three hundred thousand in the market, no?
Right, so, but it was two hundred thousand dollars to pay the twenty to make. So, and this is, the June payments are of the, the full COVID nineteen activity.
So we were projecting, we were on the verge of being under, right?
Yes, so we're gonna be, most, I mean, we're not gonna be that short like we did, I had thought.
Do you see why I tell you that we need to be more, more modest with our projection for the sales tax, so we don't know what's gonna happen?
But we were, we were actually, we, we under, what we had gone last year? We were, we projected one million dollars under, but we never received it previous year. So we did project less, a lot less. We thought we were being very conservative, but it's just that it's COVID nineteen now. And the thing is, we can't be too under because the state, remember, takes our, it takes all our sales tax and uses it in the tax rate.
That's a little wrong there.
Yeah, and so that's why we have to be very close to it, but, but we're still gonna be, it's not gonna be as low as what we had projected, what we had thought when we discussed the last two months, because it's going up.
So are we projected to make budget? Right, are we projected at this point to meet our budget?
Yes, sir, we're, we're actually going to be a couple million over, but.
Sir, then, then, uh, can I go to, uh, did you have the extra ones? I'm asking. Have something else? They're getting lost, they're all waiting, that's important, that's why they're crazy, they're hungry, they're all.
Okay, what else comes?
Yes, sir.
Any, any other questions for Carlos?
Okay, okay.
There's a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona to approve the report provided by the county, uh, Mr. Carlos Pedera for the month of May, twenty twenty. There's a second by Commissioner Juan Carmona, do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in a hope? Motion carries. Approve of claims. So, there's a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona to approve the claims that were provided to us. Do we have any questions? Any concerns? Any seconds?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Orealas. Do we have any, any other questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in a hope, same sign? Our claims are approved. Claim document, five point six is, we have the general fund in the amount of six hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and two dollars and nineteen cents. The airport is three thousand, six hundred and eighteen and seventy-three cents. The courthouse security is six thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine and sixty-eight cents. Records management's county clerk is nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. The utilities, fifty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-two and twenty-three cents. Equitable sharing is three thousand, three hundred and eighty-two and twenty-six cents. The rodeo arena is three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three and seventy-three cents. And we have the Stone Garden is in the amount of thirty-one thousand, ninety-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. The.
I think thirty-eight, Stone Garden.
Stone Garden's eighty-eight.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, I got the first figure. Uh, Stone Garden, excuse me, is not thirty-one thousand, is eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven and sixty-eight cents. The Demi County payroll is six hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-one cents. Catalina Water, uh, Works is one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. CO's eighteen is eighty-eight thousand, forty-seven dollars and sixty cents. CO's twenty-nineteen is two hundred and nineteen dollars, two hundred and seventy, two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents for a grand total of one million, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-eight cents. There's a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona to approve the, the claim document.
Sir.
There's a second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is the public safety facility corporation that we were to open, um, for new business, eight point one, anybody with new business, or any?
Just sit down.
Just sit down.
Okay. Mr. Danny, under new business, public safety facility corporation, I got a call from, uh, Board Patrol once again about the status of our workers. What's this, what, what we doing now?
Uh, my mother's son was weak, uh, uh, I was looking at the contract and, cause they need to do a background check with them. I did one with us and they were okay, but this doesn't, they gotta do their own, if they're okay, uh, we'll send one of them over.
Okay, come on.
Yeah, I got, I got a email, yeah, uh, Friday.
Okay.
She wants to meet, but I didn't know what was on the, uh, the contract, what we, what you guys, uh, what was agreed on. So I was going through it this morning.
Okay, me, we, let me know what's going on. Uh, uh, personnel expenditures, uh, we don't have anything other than, are you seeing the claim document?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Do we have the, the claim document for the public safety facility corporation in the amount of two thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-six cents? Motion to approve the commission, Alonso Carmona. Second by Commissioner Orealas, all in favor?
Aye.
All in a hope?
Sure, I can afford.
Okay.
Uh, two hundred, two, two thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars, we, we need to, those guys start.
I said it, Tony, it was for.
Tony, Tony was only.
Half of it.
They started, they started about a week and a half ago, two, two weeks or something. So what we're doing is, we send them, we send them to, uh, to do training with, uh, well, I, I think we already trained them in the water department, we trained them in the, uh, con toning, on the electricity. Uh, we're training, we're giving them little training that we, we need, I think we sent them to, I don't wanna, like, but I think we sent them to the trash truck one day.
Uh, uh, what I heard is they haven't started working over there.
They haven't started working over there. We're training, we're training them to, to let them know what we, what we need to do.
But they're assigned out of that public facilities.
Okay, so for next report, uh, does the judge to, uh, advise you, if you have to give us a report, a hundred and twenty, again, so that we don't have to have, that I have to, I told you, and, 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 it's not here.
We already did, how much they're making?
Five seven hundred and four. I'm changing, you put down two thousand, five hundred and sixty-one, totally finished it, correct?
Right.
Then, then, Tony by himself is fourteen hundred dollars, so they're only paying, uh, nine hundred each?
Well, I don't know.
Is, is that, is that the amount you're gonna get every month or with every two weeks or whatever?
Well, actually, it's him, I believe.
You could really do such as one person. Right?
Well, yes. I think he's got paid, they got paid out of.
Well, he, Tony doesn't pay no twenty-six.
Yeah, but you gotta remember that this is, it's salary, FICA.
Every month, we get the same amount for everybody.
Right.
Right?
Well, for him, right.
For everybody. We get a report, everybody gets the same amount every month.
Right.
Or every two weeks they get, except for the first week, uh, the two weeks on the, begin on the month, we get a little extra. They get a little extra because they don't pay insurance at that time, but on the second one, they pay insurance. So every time I can check the net, it's, it's saying fourteen. And here now, now we went up to twenty-five.
Like, probably got the other one people, I'll give you a breakdown, I'll give you a breakdown, I'll give you.
That's why I told you, if Eddie knows, I'm not gonna be asking silly questions.
I'll give you the break, all right? I'll give you the break.
Sorry, sir.
Okay, uh, anything else? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. That includes our business?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, yes, I mean.
Yes?
Uh, Commissioner Valerie sent me an email to share with the court that the text of today, the school district has shut down.
The school district has shut down?
Their, so.
Why? The school district shut down publicly because, um, because, uh, uh, COVID, the COVID-19 that one other personnel's got, I guess we've had a lot of contact with a lot of people there. They're putting down, okay, thank you, man. Motion to adjourn, by Commissioner Alonso Carmona? Second, somebody?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Orellas, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.